To consume blend alcohol beverage at a fundraising event on May 18, 2016 at the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. Cindy Jussman.
And the Auditor's Office received this application from Lori Kiso for the Consumer Blend License. This is their annual fundraising event for the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. And this application has also been reviewed by staff of the Sheriff's, State's Attorneys in planning and zoning. And there were no objections to the issuance of this license either.
Any questions on this one?
Move for approval.
Second. A second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is authorize the chairman to sign the 2016 agreement between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls for the detoxification services. Carol Mueller, good morning.
Good morning, Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, in front of you today is the traditional annual contract that we do with the City of Sioux Falls. The city has provided financial support for many, many years for the operation of our detoxification center. And so presented before you today is the 2016 agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. Under the terms of the agreement, the city will pay Minnehaha County $157,000 in 2016. So I would offer up any questions or that I can answer for you?
Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Barth?
It's not a question, Madam Chair, but this really has been one of the most successful partnerships between us and the city of Sioux Falls over my whole time of being a commissioner. And, you know, we oftentimes complain about the crime and stuff in our largest city. But this is an example where the city is picking up part of the costs related to liquor and stuff in our community. And I thank the city.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I agree with Jeff. This has been, this is an important part of our funding for the detox and it's a real, it's, we're very pleased that the city is willing to participate in this thing with us. And to maintain a detox center that helps these people that are really, really deep in need. So I would encourage, and I, barring any other comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
I did have another party mention to me that considering that we get little revenue from alcohol, here we are, item 10, item 11, item 12, it's all about liquor. And anyway.
I'll change.
Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign the right of entry authorization for Verizon Wireless on property legally described as tract three halls addition southeast one quarter 31-102-49. Robert Wilson.
Morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office. This is an item that you have heard about a couple of times in Building Committee. And I'm bringing up my material here quickly. But basically, we've got a consultant that works with Verizon Wireless that has been in contact with us, showed some interest in placing a cell tower on a portion of the property that we own up on West Port. That's designed for, ultimately for a museum storage facility. This would be a rather small footprint, would be between 600, 900 square feet. And at this point, what they are asking for is simply right of access to come onto the property, survey it, take a look at it, do the utility markings, the soil types, the elevations, and see if it would in fact work for them as they believe it would from their viewing it from afar right now. So we are, with this action, you're simply authorizing them to access the property, to review it further. If it is in fact suitable to, they believe it's suitable, they would come back, they would present terms of some kind of a lease. We would have full rights to negotiate that lease, go back and forth and ask for what we felt we need. This is just one step in them continuing to evaluate the property and see if it is worth something that would work for them. Just as a little background, at the direction of the Building Committee, Bill Hoskins with the museum went back and chatted with both the previous owners of the land that donated it to the county for the purpose of an archive facility. The broker who's marketing a portion of the property to be sold and the proceeds used to help finance the construction of the facility. And the museum board of directors all supported reviewing this, and so this is just the next step in that review.
Any questions for Robert? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is in presentation of the 2015 Siouxland Heritage Museum Enterprise Fund Report. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. As we're getting the presentation up, very briefly, we usually make this presentation annually at a joint meeting between the City Council and the County Commission to facilitate schedules a little bit better. We're ma, I'm making two separate presentations today of it, one for you and one for the City Council later on. The Museum Enterprise Fund, oh, let's see. We should be in business. Theory. There's a theory there. Okay, anyway, was established in 1995, fall of 1995 through a joint resolution between the city and the county. I'm required to by that resolution to make an annual report to the City Council and the County Commission by April 1st. A copy of the written report is on file in the Auditor's Office. The fund was originally, was set up to receive revenues and account for expenses associated with the rental of space in the museum system, sponsorships, and the provision of programs, events, and services for which a fee is charged. The fund is administered by Minnehaha County. Annual budgets are developed by the staff, recommended by the museum board, and approved in a joint budget hearing between the city and the county. In 2010, there was a slight modification. We used to have a separate grants account. We used to have a separate grants account, and the state auditor recommended to do away with that and that all revenues coming in be in the enterprise fund. In two thousand and fifteen, we had an income in the fund of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two seventy-six. Our total expenses were one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. The revenue in the enterprise fund comes from a variety of sources, including the museum's endowment, the Suland Heritage Museum's Alliance of Private Nonprofit, five oh one C three corporation. We are beneficiaries of another endowment, Doc and Florence Brown. Florence Brown was a fifth grade school teacher at Laura Wilder for many years. We also get money from rentals. We had a hundred and two rentals of the facility last year, just short of eight thousand people came in for those. Educational programming for which a fee is charged. We have the donation box, people who just randomly drop money in the donation boxes at the building, and some other things that we charge a fee for like exhibit services. We look at revenue a couple ways. Those are the sources of the revenue, but they go into our education exhibits, collections, management, the, in, endowment money, for instance, gets divided up for the conservation of painting X and for the support of a new exhibit at the pedigree and so on. And so we, we track where that goes as well. Expenses are really spent out of those same areas, and if you, if you look as a comparison, education programming usually makes us money, some money. Rentals make us money in excess of what we're spending on them. Collections, particularly collections management, usually costs more money than we can bring in through grants or, or so on. One of our biggest single expenses in the enterprise fund is it supports two full-time positions, the events coordinator for the Suland Heritage Museums and one of our exhibits assistants. One-third of their cost comes out of the enterprise fund and gets reimbursed annually back into the operations budget. If, if you look at our balance, the, the balance of the fund fluctuates a little bit. It is a positive balance. We have been able to build funds. Of that balance, we have what I think currently ninety-seven thousand dollars in obligated. In other words, money that's come into the fund that was specifically allocated for a specific purpose. For instance, we got a grant from the Daughters of the American Revolution last year to support the Fort Dakota exhibit. That money was dedicated specifically for that purpose. We don't have the flexibility to use it for something else. And last year, it, the fund paid for most of the expenses for the educational programming, all the materials and supplies we used for that. We did about six hundred and sixty-six programs for about forty-nine thousand people last year, and the enterprise fund paid for that. It pays for about seventy-six percent of the collection supplies and materials for keeping and maintaining the museum's collection. Twenty percent of the exhibit materials last year were paid through the enterprise fund. We replaced a number of tables and equipment for rentals. Rentals is something that we, brings money in. Expense of wear and tear on our equipment is an expense that we take out of the enterprise fund. And one of the improvements we did do was our break room, the floor, vinyl flooring was replaced. It was thirty years old, but that's a space used by caterers who rent the facility. So that expense came out of the enterprise fund, not a maintenance budget. And also last year, we ended up paying for new telephones for the old courthouse museum out of the enterprise fund. It's been a very important part of our funding. About eighteen percent of the total cost of the museum in two thousand and fifteen was paid for from the enterprise fund. And since nineteen ninety-six, the first year of the fund's operation, we've saved taxpayers about one point seven million dollars in expenses through that fund. And I know you have a copy of the written report, but if you have any questions, and just trying to keep it moving for you.
Thanks, Bill. Are there any questions for Bill?
Chair, I just would ask Bill a question about the previous issue with the cell tower on county land up there. I know we discussed it at the board, but do you have any other thoughts on that?
Well, I think this is a logical step. Really what they're asking for is permission to come on the property. They want to do soil bearing, well, test because you've got an eighty-foot tower, you need to make sure you got enough of a base and how far and how big the concrete is going to have to be in the ground and, and their points of access relative to the electrical utilities. So I think this makes perfect sense. It's, it's a logical step forward, and I'm happy to see that they're making that step forward.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is consider a motion to authorize the correspondence to the Second Circuit Court Administration on Attorney Lean Fee Collections Preference with the South Dakota Obligations Recovery Center.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Mueller, Commission Administrative Officer. Two weeks ago, I shared with you information about the state forming the Obligations Recovery Center, which we refer to as the O R C. This was created during the two thousand and fifteen South Dakota Legislative Session. The O R C will include collection of court-ordered obligations for adult criminal proceedings in circuit and magistrate courts, which will include restitution to victims, fines, costs, fees, or assessments. Attorney fees for services provided by the county to indigent defendants may also be collected as a court-ordered obligation if the county chooses to participate. And that's the decision that I am asking you to make today. And by the way, those would be only for those that are found guilty. Okay? Because the others will still go through our regular process. A person who has an outstanding balance to the O R C and is not making regular payments will not be able to obtain or maintain any motor vehicle, motorcycle, or board registration, driver's license, hunting license, fishing license, state park permit, or camping permit unless either the person has paid the debt and cost recovery fee in full, or the person enters into a payment plan with the O R C and the planned payments are current. For cases that the O R C collects on, reimbursement will be as, applied as follows. First will be restitution, second liquidated costs, third surcharge to court automation, fourth surcharge to victims' compensation, and the fifth would be anything that would be returned to the county for court-ordered attorney fees. The commission has the option to either, one, request that the court's ordered repayment of such attorney fees, which would subject these obligations to the rules and collection practices of the O R C, or request that our court sets such attorney fees to civil lien, which would allow the county to retain the practice of retaining control of these attorney debts and attaching liens. So with that, I would open up for any questions, and we have not heard anything differently. The courts have told us that they wanted a direction from the county by April one, and so we're getting it scheduled just a couple of weeks early for that. So the courts are looking for some decision for you. And just as a reminder, we've been told by the courts too that you can say, if we choose to do it one way at this point, maybe in six months from now, you can go ahead and do that, i.e. if you choose to leave it alone for six months or a year, whatever period of time, you could always join in at a later time. Questions?
Discussion, Commissioner Kelly?
Carol, does this include public defender and public advocate costs?
Yes.
Because I noticed in here it says court-appointed attorney fees.
Yep.
Where, does that include?
Public defenders, public advocates, and, and public attorneys that would be appointed in for co, when there's conflict.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benega?
Carol, one of the things that I think we need a little clarification on is how the courts decide what indigent means, because we've had discussions in the past about what the limits of liability are, so to speak, that each of those individuals may have for either income or real estate assets and all that kind of stuff.
That is up to the courts to make that decision, and we at this point have not, that's a court, a judge's decision as to whether or not that person is indigent or not. They have a, a brief form that they go through and, and fill out, and, and yes, we do see wide variance in, in those forms. So, but that is not something that we control.
I understand we don't control it, but I was wondering if there's a rule of thumb that each one of those judges uses in making that decision?
No, they do not have one.
Commissioner Barth?
Just to Commissioner Benega's point there, I believe that no matter what level of income a person charged with a crime is, the judge still can appoint a public attorney to represent them, and I believe that that has happened. And so we, we cannot coerce the judges into following our recommendations on indigent appointment.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benega? Commissioner Bender?
That's okay. I know we're easily confused. I, you know, I mean, it seems to me that this is, and I guess I just confess that I'm not usually an early adopter. I like to sometimes see how things play out a little bit before I jump in. It seems like there's a lot of open questions yet about how this process will actually work. To be honest, I have, I have questions about the overall policy of whether it makes sense for us to pull driver's licenses and, and otherwise impose penalties on, on people who are otherwise at risk for coming back onto county roles either by becoming back in the jail for, for failure to, for driving without a license or, or not losing a job because they don't have a license and needing other help. And so my, my preference at this point is that we stand back and that we, we wait and see how this process actually gets implemented, give us some more time to study it and, and think through the implications of it, particularly given that it appears there's no barrier for us coming on at a later time, at any time we should choose, actually.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, Carol, I just have a question on the reimbursements. The restitution, liquidated costs, and the four that are ahead of us, those money goes, that, that money goes to the judicial, the?
The judicial system, correct.
Not, the county does not eat those charges in, in our court costs?
No, no. We are, what, we're number five on the list?
Okay, so we don't see anything until that point?
Correct. That is the order in which they are traditionally paid unless the judge cha, would change that.
Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, you know, the Sixth Amendment to the Constitution says that in all criminal prosecutions, the accused shall enjoy the right to, and that paragraph ends, to have the assistance of counsel for his defense. It doesn't say that you have to pay for it. It says you have the right to that assistance. And the fact that we in this state charge people for that is, is actually different than how they do it in other states where those costs are covered, and in those other states where the state itself covers it, not the county. And I currently, I believe that our current system, while it might not be completely according to the Sixth Amendment, is working just fine. We don't child, uh, charge interest. And the idea that going forward, that we expect people to work without a driver's license, get child, uh, vote, you know, without a driver's license, you can't vote. Thank goodness, we can still buy guns because we won't take that privilege away from people. So, you know, and I, I would wonder who's going to get this twenty percent interest? What collection agency? Whose buddy runs that collection agency? I don't like it. Hunting, fishing, camping, can't do it. So if your ex-spouse owes you child support and you can't get license plates on your car because that person is joint owner, who suffers? Our community suffers. I, I think we should go with the, the current system, and we should work with the judges to make sure that people who are not indigent don't get court-appointed lawyers. So I, I recommend staying with the current system.
Additional comments?
I would just say I agree with Commissioner Bender that we should wait and reevaluate this at a while. I was just at the NACO conference, and one of the things that came up in one of the presentations was a commissioner from Miami, and she just commented that they had gone to taking away driver's license from people that had not paid their bills, and she said it's a disaster. And I agree with what my fellow commissioner said, that you start taking away driver's license of people, and then they can't get to their job, how are they going to pay their bills? So I am concerned about that, and I think we should also wait. Commissioner, oh, Kelly. It's like, who are we pointing to? Commissioner Kelly?
Ironically, I agree with you guys. I, I, I do think, I'm not going to, I don't want to close a door on this thing, but I think, one, they had a year to set it up, and all of a sudden, you know, ten months down the road, they say, my gosh, we got to get this done, and we don't even get administrative rules set up from what I understand. I prefer to put this on the table or to defer it for six months. Let us look at how it's working out, what the effect is. And one other thing I might point out is that in Route Fifty today, which I think you all get an email from, there's a very extensive article, I read about half, but, but on the just, on the Department of Justice's, I don't know if it's a ruling or what, that, that these costs are, are not collectible. So I would assume that's going to go to, through the court process and, and there again, but I, I'd like to leave it on the table simply that, so we can look at it in six months and see. It does offer some things, but I agree also that it does create a lot of problems there, and, and perhaps the system we're using now is the more equitable, and, and at least the county at that point has an option of, of making some settlement on the claim. Under this, I believe we lose all control of the thing. I'd make a motion to defer this for six months.
Should we, can we say a motion till like the first part of October or the end of September? Oh, excuse me. Kirsten has a comment first.
I guess what the commi, uh, the courts are asking for at this point is some correspondence, which method you want to, to do. I mean, the status quo, they still want to know whether you want to adhere to the status quo, which would be a request to set these to civil lien immediately upon, you know, if, if the court has a pronouncement on it. So I would, I would say probably you should authorize some correspondence one way or the other, whichever way you want to go, but I would, I would maybe phrase it that way. And frankly, defer, all it does is it compels you to bring it up again as a matter of course. You can always bring it up again by putting it on a regular agenda, too.
I realize that, but I, I, so I change a motion to say defer action for six months and in the meantime authorize the state attorney to, or whoever, to, to send a letter to the court saying we are to continue on the present system we have and not join the O R C.
Madam Chair, I would support that, but I, there's a citizen that would like some input on this.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a second for discussion.
Have a second for discussion. Connie, give your name and your address, please.
Pull the mic closer to you. I'm Connie Morgan. I live at nine sixteen South Grandview Avenue here in Sioux Falls. I just became aware of this last night, which is why I'm up here when I haven't been here for a while. Just the whole thing, just about had my hair on fire. I was that upset over it. This is to me nothing more than another collection agency. Who's actually going to run this? Is this going to be the state? Is this going to be privatized? Who gets that extra twenty percent? Does this twenty percent added on to a debt? How does that help the, the debtor? I, I just don't see where this is going to make anything any better. I think it's going to end up with more people in jail over debt, and our constitution says we aren't supposed to have debtors' prisons, and yet we're going back to that. That's just unconscionable. And I think giving represent, representation to people who are accused of something in court is the cost of doing government. It's to guarantee our citizens their rights. It's just not right to go after them if they can't afford to pay. Maybe we need some, some process to determine whether they're indigent or not. That's what's come up, and I'm glad to hear that you're concerned about that. You know, if, if a person is sitting on a bankroll of a million dollars, of course they should pay. But if they don't have two nickels to rub together, what's the point in harassing them and adding twenty percent to the bill? It just makes no sense to me. And another thing we need to think about is And another thing we need to think about is, unfortunately, poor people and minorities are more apt to get accused of crimes and need that defense. And I think we need to remember what happened in Ferguson, Missouri, because they were targeting minorities and poor people to accuse them of crimes, just to keep the city running. That was how, that was how they were funding their city government, and I don't think we wanna head in that direction. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Connie. I have a motion and a second on the table. Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment on what you said. I, I, I don't think in Minnehaw County or in South Dakota, the poor and, and minorities are targeted by anybody, and I take exception to that.
Now, there's less help available for the poor, and then, and I know that from my own personal experience.
Connie, okay, Connie, we're gonna move on. I have a motion and a second on the table to defer this for six months, to revisit it, but also to continue on with what we're doing as putting civil liens on expenses.
On court, uh, court-appointed attorney fees.
Court-appointed attorney's fees.
Yes.
Commissioner Benega?
You know, when we heard about this last week, we asked some questions about the whole process problem that it creates for the counties, including the whole issue of trying to keep track of some of the payments and those kinds of things from a, an operating standpoint, if you will. And I don't believe that anybody has had the ability at this point to give us when those administrative rules are gonna be adopted, because at this point, my knowledge is, there are no details. And as we all know, the devil's in the details, and deferring it probably will help, but I'm not sure. We even know where this thing is gonna go, because of the fact, number one, we're fifth in the, on the list. We don't know what the cost is for us internally to be able to process payments. And then the last thing is an indigent care conversation that somehow needs to be addressed, and that's part of the court's responsibility, and I, I hope they do that. So I would encourage that the Administrative Rules Details Committee, whomever that is, gets their act together quickly.
We have a motion to defer, although in six months, we may be saying the exact same things, 'cause nothing has happened, and so I will support this motion, but I don't really think that a six-month deferral is gonna do us a lot of good, because we may just be having a five-minute conversation, and it just goes away again. But I will support the motion. Any other comments?
Do you wanna do that to a date specific, like October 1?
We'll just let Carol figure it out. It's, we'll say six months, that's fine. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is an update and status report of the 91st legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaw County. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office. This is gonna be the last time for about 10 months that I bring one of these legislative updates to you. We're wrapped up the main portion of this year's legislative session last Friday, and just wanted to give you a, kind of a final wrap-up. I think for the most part, did okay. We've got a couple of major pieces of legislation for counties that we're still waiting on a, see if we have, gonna get a governor's signature, but for some of the, the things we've been looking at, did fairly well. I'll just run through some of the highlights, and as always, ask me questions if you, if you like, as I go along. There were three House bills, House Bills 1002, 3, and 4, that came out of the summer study, more or less as cleanup language. All of those passed really without any dissent or exception. Should make our statutes dealing with counties a little cleaner moving forward, hopefully. One of the bills related to that, also coming out of the summer study, was House Bill 1005, which would update some of the fees the sheriff's office, treasurer's office can collect for the, some of the duties they perform and services they provide. That would, um, could provide us with as much as half a million dollars in general fund revenue, new money each year. That has passed both houses, that is waiting a governor's signature right now. We're hopeful that that comes through, and, and obviously, if we do, that, that will be significant. The other revenue bill that we're waiting, waiting on is Senate Bill 2, which would re-divide the way that wholesale liquor tax is distributed across the state. Currently, it's distributed, distributed 75% to the state, 25% to municipalities. This bill would change that to 50% to the state, 25% to municipalities, and 25% to counties. It's again, been passed by both houses, now waiting for a governor's signature, and that, that also would provide some significant general fund revenue if it is signed, and we'll, we'll, we'll watch that closely. Just going through some of the other ones, we, we had one, House Bill 1102, that would give, provide a little additional time from 30 days up to 45 days to review sealed bids, which would, in times, be helpful to, on some of our, our more complicated RFPs that we put out, and, and proposals that come in, that, that may be helpful. To get, we've got a number of bills that, that law enforcement had brought, brought forward, some different changes that might, might help them. We've got a, a pos, a change on the, the bid limit level, the amount of a contract or service in some cases that would have to go out for bid versus could be a, a direct contract and, and contact and, and contract for provision of services from $25,000 to $50,000 for any public improvement, supply, or service. And that, that could, could be significant to some of our departments. Might, if you were interested in, in fully implementing that, that might require a policy change, but it's a, an option that is now provided for in state law. And that, that's a, that's a quick summary of our, the bills that we were watching this session. As always, if you have any questions for me, please, but otherwise, it could've been a whole lot worse for counties.
Any additional questions for Robert on the bills?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Kelly?
I think all in all, we came out pretty well in this legislative session. I, they did provide a help, we were still waiting, of course, on the governor's signature, but that bill passed the House 66 to nothing, I think it was, so there's a huge support out there, and, and I'm sure he's gonna give that consideration. And his job, of course, is to protect state funds, but I, I, I think the legislature is saying, we understand the county's problems, we understand the situation they're in, our law enforcement costs are going up, and, so I, I think the summer study was, I think, very important, because, one, they started out with a review from legis, legislative law, and I think they really gained an insight into what the county's problems are, why they're occurring. There were several of us up there, several of us testified, and I, I think it was really helpful. I think the involvement we had, and, and ours was probably more so than any other county, I think, from what I remember. So I encourage that maybe, you know, we're gonna continue to look in future years, but I, I think we're in much better shape than we were, particularly if the governor will sign 1105 and, and Senate Bill 2.
Any additional questions, comments?
I just have to concur with Commissioner Kelly on this. I've been here for 10 years, and before that, I was attending these meetings for two out of the previous four years. This has been the best year ever, and thank you to our legislators for their efforts. The summer study was, was really good, and not that things are perfect, but this was the best year ever. Yay.
Yeah, I agree. The summer study, I think, was very important, and sometimes you see summer studies happen, and nothing, nothing moves forward. Last year, the summer study, we got the highway bill out of it, which was excellent, and this year, Senate Bill 2, and some other smaller bills that they worked on, and, and I think they really listened to counties this year, which was really great. Commissioner Kelly?
I think kudos, additional kudos are, are meant for the, for the South Court Association of County Commissioners. They're the boots on the ground up there during this whole legislative process, and between last year with the, with the help of Senator Ray, and, and, and our group, we got the, some additional funding in our highways. This year, we got some broader to help us in the public safety, but I think we have to remember, 'cause sometimes we discuss the SDACC and say, what are we doing? But I think they proved their value this year.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benega?
The only thing I would add is, I'd like to thank the staff for making numerous trips, because each of the department heads and the administrative wing, if you will, made multiple trips, and we appreciate that. And then behind you, I think, or at least he was there.
Yeah, he's still right there.
Thank Mark for living up there for, it was only eight weeks, but I'm sure it seemed longer than that. So thank everybody for their efforts, 'cause it's more than a one-person function.
Yeah, it is. Additional comments? All right, thank you. We will move on to the next one, which is Minnehaw County Liaison Assignments Reports. Are there any reports? I just would give you two. I met yesterday with 4H and visited with them a little bit. Their intent is to make quarterly reports at a commission meeting. They did have last, I think it was last week, they did the water, I can't think what you call it now, but the water thing with the fourth grades, and they are a big sponsor and work with that water festival, yeah, and they intended to have somebody here from that, and it just didn't quite work out. We have in the past had somebody from the 4H come and talk about that. Charles tells me that, since he's come on board, they've about doubled their numbers with kids involved with 4H. They've also really got going up the junior achievement, I believe it was junior achievement program, going back up again, and they're working with, teaching them how to run a correct meeting, and that had kinda fallen away in the last few years, and so they've really worked, started to teach these kids Robert's rules and how to effectively run a meeting. Said there's a lot of really good things going on, and they're continuing to do outreach to other areas, so I think we'll continue to see good things coming out of the 4H. I also mentioned last week that I would talk a little bit about NACO conference that I went, and it's kinda hard to pull together everything you hear in almost a week's worth of time, when you go to meetings starting at about 7:30 in the morning, and you go most of the day. I'm just gonna throw out a few comments, not to say that we're not doing some of these things, just some of the things that I highlighted as I went through some of my notes, and I'm by no means through with everything I had. I basically went through my written reports that I, notes that I'd written, I have a lot of documents that were handed out at different conferences and stuff. This was a legislative audit, so we were really there to work on legislation to bring forward to, up to the Hill and stuff, and so that's kinda what we focused on, and I sit on the commis, the committee of public safety and judicial, and so that was where most of my time was spent, is listening on those committees. Some other things that came out, we went to one that was on, obviously behavioral health was a big part of some of the stuff that I listened to. They talked about, sorry, it's kinda hard to read my notes and think at the same time, but San Diego had a program that I think is a little similar to our safe home, but they said that they had, in San Diego, they have a project called 25, where they focused on 28 people in the city that had the biggest issues with alcohol and drugs and reoccurring same kind of things that we do, but they said that they saved about $3.7 million by focusing on just those 28 people and getting them into services by reducing their hospital, the ER, and their jail stays, and they also had put up some type of a home to, to put these people in. They weren't just focusing on the chronic alcoholics like we do, but they focused more on people who had drug addictions. Miami Day, our Miami Public Defenders, they talked about stabilization units and training of all of the officers on mental illness, so that they knew when they were out on the street what to be looking for, and if they were in a situation where they were dealing with somebody specifically with mental illnesses, that they were calling in backup to help with that, to try to de-escalate the situation. I went to one on body worn camera, or body worn cameras, which I know our sheriff has looked at that, and we've talked about that in the past. It was very interesting to listen to it. They said their number one thing that they were concerned about was policy. Obviously, wanna have your policy set very clearly when you go forward, although they said, this was in Virginia, that they had found that they had saved money, because they said one civil case can save not only officers' life, one civil case with body worn cameras can not only save the officer's life, but also save the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money, just because you've got that immediate, always worn camera right there. They also said it was very important to negotiate prices. If you're going to, to go that way, they, the vendor that they used started out with their cameras being $500, but they said by the time they negotiated them, they had them down to $100 a camera. They talked about a lot of the logistics in that, and they, in their, in their county, it was gonna cost them about $5.5 million over five years for the cameras and storage. It's a significant amount of money, and I know our sheriff looks at this stuff, and it's really not for me to make those decisions. It was just a very interesting conversation, and they use the cloud for all their storage. I know that was one of the questions that we'd had when we'd had been talked about about a year ago, is how do you go forward with that? And they said that there was also state JAG funds available for that type of stuff. I don't know that we're there yet, but it was a very interesting group that I listened to. And one of the resolutions that we worked on was with emergency management, and I'm sure our emergency management is looking at all these things, but there was a, we sent a resolution to the Justice and Public Safety. We approved to sending to Congress one. There's a resolution out there, because they're talking about concentration of damages, and if that would go through the way it's written, what it would do is, it would decrease the amount of funding that we would be able to get in smaller towns, because they're looking for larger numbers, and it would end up hitting more of the, the larger cities instead of the smaller towns, because we're so broken up in where the spaces are, where the damage could be. So we talked about that significantly and sent a resolution up about this part of the bill that caused, talks about concentration of damages. Another program that was started, I believe, in Texas was, they have a text system for students. When students are concerned about mental illness issues, either with themselves, or they know someone who's going to commit suicide, or, or they're just, they can, they can text in an anonymous text, more or less, and they get a response immediately from a qualified health professional to help them through the situation, or at least give them further direction of where they should go, or how they should report, and they said it has been very successful. We attended several on stepping up, and our county is starting to move forward with the stepping up initiative. It's very small nationwide, but it is supported by NACO, and that is working with behavioral health treatments and how we deal with that in our jails and stuff, and so there was a lot of things about that. One of the last ones I attended was, several governors from different states got together, they talked about poverty in the United States. They said one in four kids in rural America live in poverty. They talked about what was important to get kids out of poverty, and I think we all know education is the number one factor for getting kids out of poverty. The Utah governor happened to, he gave his four points. One was education, get a job, get married, and have kids, in that order. That's the best way to stay out of poverty, and I thought that was kinda fun. And they said education is your pathway out of, out of poverty. And they talked about, another conference I went to was on childhood trauma caused by consequences and creating trauma-informed counties. They just talked about the toxic stress effects that happen to the brain long-term for kids who live in stressful situations, not just specifically a brain injury, but the injury that results as, as a child lives in a traumatic situation, and also the sooner you can get them out, the repair that can happen to their brains as they're younger. So, all in all, a very good conference, a lot of information to digest, so that was kind of an overview of an awful lot of stuff I heard, so.
I hope to attend next year, Cindy.
It was a good, it was a good program, so. With that, back to my notes. If there are no more liaisons reports, are there any, is there any new business? Mr. Litz?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, and I do have some public information, and Mr. Barth had reminded me about it earlier. I hope Mr. Walker takes note, even though we do pay to have the same published. I would tell you that the, March 28th is a, is a big day. At, at 8 o'clock in the morning, the Auditor's Office will be open for absentee voting for the city school election. At 5 o'clock that same day on March 28th, we will no longer be taking new voter registrations for that same election. The next day, March 29th, is the last day that you can turn in your petitions. So there, you know, you won't be able to hold it in close to the vest anymore. You'd have to have it stamped at our office by 5 o'clock, or postmarked, and on the way to the Secretary of State, if that's where you're gonna send it into. The one exception to this is independents. You have until April 26th to turn your, your petitions in.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? For a motion to adjourn in the executive session for personnel and contract negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Motion passes unanimously.
Constantly get messages on this phone that says it's not connected to the server?